All right, I think it's 7:02. It looks like Bob, looks like the applicant is here. I think the meeting has already been set as record because Jeannie is enjoying herself and not here. And I am, I've been given limited rights to Zoom, very appropriately so. So I think we will open the hearing this June 26, 2024 of the Brushhill Homes project. What is the official? Phoenix Partners Brushhill LLC for a comprehensive permit under general laws, chapter 40B, for development of eight ownership units located on land in Sherborn. That is the agenda for the evening, is the select board here and would like to open their meeting. I see that as well on the agenda.
I believe I'm the only select board member here, Zach. So until we have a quorum, if we get a quorum, I will alert you and we'll open our meeting.
Sounds good. Rick, thank you very much for some of your notes from your tenure experience as the chair. I appreciate that. I apologize for my delinquency in responding to you. So with the opening of the 40B comprehensive permit hearing, I'd like to just say a few words. And I'm sure many of you have heard them before, if you're joining from other 40Bs. But for the sake of any new participants, I will read Rick's great notes. So with respect to 40B projects, zoning board members have a statutory obligation to follow chapter, the chapter 40B statute and implement it fairly. 40B is designed to encourage the construction of affordable housing by eliminating local obstacles that are seen as unfair or unreasonable. 40B has always been a classic Massachusetts legislative fix of trying to get something for nothing. The expensive something is more affordable housing. The expensive nothing is pretending the associated infrastructure, abutter impacts and schooling costs are free. They are not. As everyone in business knows, something for nothing does not work, but 40B is the statute that we have. The most zealous 40B supporter would argue that all local regulations are simply disguises for improper prejudice, trying to exclude persons of the wrong color or socioeconomic background from the community. To those zealots, I would note that Sherborn's first affordable housing was a town approved and built project funded by tax dollars. Those same pro-40B zealots see 40B developers as knights in shining armor, creating needed housing at enormous personal sacrifice. Anti-40B zealots see those same 40B developers as clever manipulators of a rigged system, lining their pockets by steamrolling aside local requirements with which their market rate competitors must abide by building three McMansions right on the property line for every affordable unit, while making no real contribution to the affordable housing stock. As in many things, wisdom probably lies between the pro and the anti extremes. Each citizen gets to decide where they fall on that spectrum. What is not open to dispute is that the ZBA is simply obligated to follow the statute and regulations. The ZBA is not an advocate for project opponents nor for the development team. We sit in a quasi judicial capacity charged with fair administration of the statute. Most well-planned projects wind up being approved with conditions. The ZBA may disapprove for various reasons, including lack of site control, legitimate demonstrable health and safety risks, but we may not disapprove for too much school cost, density higher than zoning, not the town's preferred look or feel, not consistent with the town character and grounds not applied to a similar size and type market project. Citizen conduct during ZVA meetings like town meeting, no applause, please, no booing. Abutters do not have to like the applicant and the applicant does not have to like the abutters, but everyone has to be courteous. Like town meeting, it is okay to agree with comments, but simply repeating the same ones over and over does not help the process. These are open hearings, not a filibuster session. I will add to the residents that have a strong position that my experience in Massachusetts courts is that you must rebut expert or professional expertise with peer professional expertise. So to underscore the point of not repeating yourself, I think it's best to find those who have similar qualifications to rebut the professional opinions that most likely will be submitted in support of the applicant's project. Tonight will not be the last hearing on the project. There will be other chances to comment. Verbal submissions are valid and preserved on the meeting recording, but written submissions are strongly encouraged as more effective and easily preserved for our records. Sorry, I'm just admitting more participants. And with that, I think I would open the meeting to the applicant to describe, I guess, provide a description of the project and maybe we can discuss sort of what the next administrative steps are. And I would ask Paul Haverty, Mr. Haverty, to be gracious in reminding me maybe of my guardrails as I fumble through some of my first meetings as chair.
I'm happy to do that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So I guess I'll start before I talk about the project, Zach, and just say that your, your public policy comments on 40B, I don't agree with much of them. I do agree that you have an obligation to, that the ZBA has an obligation to treat the project fairly under the 40B statute, and I'm hopeful that you will. But I don't agree with what, what you said. I firmly believe that affordable housing is something that is an issue of public health. It's an issue of public health as much as nitrogen loading and all of these other things that we spend so much time talking about. I strongly, strongly disagree that, that affordable housing is not a serious matter of public health. So I'll leave it at that. This project, I guess I would say you've denied the first two. Maybe the third time will be a charm for me, or maybe the change of chair will, will change my outcome. But I'm going to give it, give it a try and we'll see where it all goes. So this is a project that is in the northern reaches of Sherborn, almost on the Framingham border. It's on a country road, Brushhill Road. It's a five acre site with a 50 acre strip that runs about 600 feet back behind all of the single family housing that is along the, mostly along the frontage of Brushhill Road. And it's surrounded on several sides by really probably about 60% of the perimeter of the property borders with town forest and town conservation land. It, it's eight homes. It is, it's been slimmed down from the, the project eligibility letter, which originally talked about four three bedrooms and four four bedrooms. This project will be six two bedrooms and two three bedrooms. So we went from 20, 28 bedroom proposal to an 18 bedroom proposal that we're looking at now. The, the homes, the eight homes are New England cottage style, similar to not the exact same architecture, but fairly similar to what we've spent the last nine or 10 months looking at on Farm Road. They are generally on the smaller side. They're, they're less than 2,000 square feet. And I'm hopeful that this project can be a nice multi-generational mix of some folks in our town that are looking to downsize into a condominium type of living in a, in a smaller space, in a more affordable space. And at the same time, I'm hopeful that we'll be attracting some young families, particularly into the, the couple of three bedrooms and perhaps even smaller families into some of the two bedroom homes. I think that multi-generational living is a really attractive thing and that we can develop a really nice, a nice community here. The, to spend a minute on septic, the, as most folks I'm sure know, the depth to groundwater was certainly not allowable under the local or under the Board of Health local bylaw. And it will be a raised system. You can see it. If you want to bring up the plan, Zach, we can.
You know what? I, I do not, I'm on my iPad with limited functionality. If you can do it, I'm, I'll try.
Yeah, I, yeah, no, I don't, I don't have that. You'll set, so I can just talk to it. The, the septic system will be a raised system in kind of the north. Let's see, it would be the northeast corner of the property. Oh, somebody was able to bring it up.
I thank you to whoever did that.
Great. Thank you. If we could just go to the next page, the second page is the one that I think will have the best look at the project.
It's the former chair putting it up from Elba.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
That one?
Yeah, maybe just make it just a little bit bigger so folks can see it.
I'll try. Hold on. You. Let's try 150%.
That's going to be, no.
Too big?
That's way too big, yeah.
All right, hold on.
I would say maybe 70, 75, Rick, you can try that.
You're getting the AV support you paid for here.
AV.
Hey, I'm old enough to know what that means.
Exactly. Well, I am too. Yeah, of course.
Okay, still, still wrong. Maybe 50. Let me try it again.
Yeah, we could put it up on an overhead projector, maybe.
Yeah, exactly. Or threading the, the 16 millimeter, another skill that doesn't get called on very often. How's that? If I scroll around a little bit, will that help?
Yeah, I think that works. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. So you can see the, in the upper right hand corner of the, of the lot, you see the septic system. It does have a retaining wall around it. And that system is designed for, as I recall, just under 2,000 gallons per day. And let's see, what else can we talk about? The water supply is always of great interest to people. In this project, I've decided that each home will have its own well, which will be, you can see them kind of dotted around the, the exterior of the lot, along the exterior, behind the homes. So there'll be eight wells on the site. Those wells will meet, to my knowledge, they will meet all of the local regulations for wells and water supply. Each, each well will serve one home. They'll all be more than 75 feet from each other. They'll all be more than 150 feet from the septic system. And I, I think they, and then they'll all be 25 feet from the property line. I believe we are completely compliant with the private well regulations of the Sherpen Board of Health. The septic system, as I said before, is not, certainly not compliant. It's a raised system. We did not have the, the local depth of groundwater, nor actually did we have the, the local perk rate. I'm, I'm assuming, Zach, that you'll want me to bring the engineer and go through all of this stuff in a lot more detail at some point. But I wasn't aware that you wanted that tonight, so I didn't invite them.
Sounds, that sounds great, Bob. Thank you. Yes.
Okay. So you can see the, the driveway is 20 feet wide. It comes down that 50 foot wide strip, coming in from the right from Brushhill Road. There's 50 feet of frontage and then a 50 foot strip going back to what is a, I don't know what it is, 4.7 acre kind of rectangle in the back. Then you can see that, excuse me, there's kind of a loop around. And the homes are set around kind of that circle. And there's a little bit of grade or you might even say a kind of a moderate downhill grade from where you enter the site down to the back, the back property line. You can see that we flattened out some of the, the grade. So the, that, that circle in the middle is, is reasonably level as are kind of some of the backyards that we've created. And then you see the, the stormwater is fairly evident from, from looking at the plan. I'm trying to think what else I can let you know. The closest neighbor's wells, there are three neighbors' wells. And they are all, and they're all about or just a little bit more than 400 feet from our septic system. I'll remind folks that the local regulation is 150 feet. And these again are 400 feet from the neighbor's wells. So we've got a pretty good, you know, we're, we're fortunate that the property allowed us that type of setback. And certainly we meet the, well, actually you can see right, right where it is right now, Rick, that the well for number 44 is more than 150 feet from any of our wells. Probably the closest of our wells to the well at number 44 is probably approaching 200 feet, I would guess, maybe, maybe a little less than, sorry, 200 feet, maybe a little less than that. Maybe 185, something like that. And trying to think what else I can, there are very, very, if you look at the upper part, Rick, if you want to push up to the top of the plan, in the back left corner. So if you want to show the top of the plan.
Try, try, try to do it.
Yep, no worries.
This isn't my day job. Oops, it went too far.
There you go. Yeah, so I was just going to talk about wetlands and, you know, Concom purview here. If you look at the very top of the plan, you'll see the wetland line just crosses over the corner of the property there. Yep, wetland flag number 10 is right in the, in the, yep, exactly. And so you can see we've drawn a hundred foot line setback, which is the local setback as well as, I believe, the, the state setback. And what we've got in that buffer zone is some stormwater and then just some grading of the septic system itself, not, not the, the actual field, but some grading and the, and a little bit of the retaining wall kind of push into that 100 foot buffer zone. So we'll need to go to Concom at once, once you all have, I hope, approved this plan, then we'll go to Concom for an NOI to do that small amount of work in the outer buffer zone.
Is that a stormwater basin, Bob, in that corner? Is that what I'm seeing? Or no?
That, that, the bigger one is an open basin.
Okay.
And then the others.
Like a large, like a large sort of open for stormwater? Is that the idea?
Yeah, you can see the grade, Zach, runs from 204 at the outer edge down to 200. So it's, it's not a drop off of fourth, you know, it's not a swimming pool four feet deep, but rather it's a, it's a gradual grade of four feet down to the center.
I just want to make sure that's, I just want to make sure that was my, that my interpretation was.
Yeah, it's a very typical open detention basin or retention basin. I always get the, the two confused. But in any case, it catches your stormwater and lets it kind of dissipate into the ground. And if you get a big, big storm, then there's an overflow system that takes, takes it off the. So it doesn't just flood, it's, it's kind of taken off in a controlled way, which is fairly typical. We, we have one at Abbey Road. I would guess that most multifamily sites in Sherburne and elsewhere would have something like this. You can do it either buried in the ground or you can do it this way, kind of open air, so to speak. And this project has both of those methodologies. And, oh, and, and I guess I didn't say it, but I think most people know by now, in a project under chapter 40B, two of the eight homes will be affordable at an 80% AMI. And which would mean, in this case, these are for sale units. And depending on whether the affordables are two bedrooms or three bedrooms, they would sell to qualified families at somewhere between something like $280,000 to $330,000 for these homes. The market rate homes, I'm guessing, would be, you know, depends on where the market is by the time we get them built, but would probably come in under, under a million. Certainly in today's environment, I think they'd be under a million dollars, given their square footage.
And you said, you said there was how many two, three, you're not certain how many.
Sure, there are, there are.
You're not certain what the mix will be at the moment with the final mix.
We, we know what the mix of the bedroom, the bedrooms will be. It will be six two bedrooms and two three bedrooms for a total of 18 bedrooms.
But you're not sure which ones are affordable yet.
We do not know which ones are affordable yet. You don't do that until the end with mass housing.
Okay, thank you.
Mass housing has the, you know, what will happen is we go and suggest to mass housing which two we would like to see affordable, and there are parameters. They don't let you, you know, pick the most horrible two homes on the site and make those the affordable ones. Fortunately, to be honest, looking at this site layout at least, I don't see any of these as being significantly less attractive than any others. Sometimes you do have that and it can be a bit of a debate, I would.
And just to, just to clarify for those here, the, the external appearance is going to be roughly the same, correct? That's part of the 40B.
Absolutely. In fact, that, that is, that is a requirement of mass housing.
Then when you say different attributes, you mean different site location potentially or things of that nature?
Yes, exactly. I was, I was saying that in this case, I, I wouldn't look at these eight units and say, oh, you know, one, one or two have a much nicer or much less nice location on the site. They're all the same architecture. You know, the only thing to kind of address what you were alluding to, all of the, the affordable homes and the market rate homes from the outside should be indistinguishable from each other. However, the developer is allowed to have finishes. So if it's, this is not going to be a development with, you know, Wolf cooktops and Sub-Zero refrigerators, obviously. But if it was a development with Sub-Zero refrigerators, the developer is not required to put a Sub-Zero refrigerator in the affordable units. You can, you can use less expensive appliances, countertops, fixtures, et cetera.
Agreed with that interpretation. Thanks, Bob.
Yep. And I, I think I've covered everything I can think of. I'm more than happy to take questions and I'm sure there are many or will be many, certainly over time. And I, you know, at the end of the evening, I'd love for us to kind of put together a little bit of a schedule for when you'd like to see what. Oh, oh, the other thing, Zach, that I neglected to say is that, and you know, by no means was anybody supposed to have even opened these emails. But for me, I wanted to, my target was to get you or, or to get the Board of Health, the Title V application and to get you all the, the, all the stormwater, the stormwater report and the full stormwater plan by today. When, it wasn't required to submit the application, but obviously it's required for the, for you to review the project. And I did get both of those to you late this afternoon, which, you know, you can take up in the, in the coming weeks.
Right. Do you, do you have any sense of Board of Health process? The item, don't know if you want to address that first or maybe not first.
Sure. Well, I, I guess what I'd love to just remind us all of, and it's kind of second nature to me, but it's not to everyone else. The, the way that 40, and you know, Rick knows this, the way that 40B works is this board is taking the place of most of the regulatory boards in town in terms of permitting, permitting under local regulations. The two exceptions, and correct me, Rick and Paul, if I'm wrong, but the two exceptions, as I understand them, are the Title V application for the septic system is to be taken up as a separate regulatory matter by the, the local approving authority, which in this case is the Sherpen Board of Health. And that, and that can go either before, at the same time or after the comprehensive permit application goes through the process with the ZBA. I've chosen to have it go in parallel, which is also what we did, obviously, mostly at Farm Road, although we were a little later on Farm Road. So the Board of Health has a completely distinct responsibility for reviewing and, and hopefully approving the septic system. And that's not in the purview of the ZBA. The ZBA can take a look at the local regulations and decide whether they want to waive them per my request to waive them. And then, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, my, my thought there would just be, I, I know there's been some, in other projects, there's been some late submissions.
Sure.
That have, do you have expressed dissatisfaction with the late nature of those submissions by the Board of Health? And so I just, to the extent that we can avoid that for this project, that was my motivation for suggesting that we make sure that they have had their bite at the apple, so to speak, and so that we can then move forward with, you know, a full picture from their perspective. And we don't have to deal with you feeling like you haven't, you know, been given a fair opportunity to.
No, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, Zach. And I will say that, you know, for Farm Road, we did come in later on that application than we wanted to. And, you know, it, it wasn't the smoothest process from our side or the Board of Health's side. I, I think we can both, both sides can do better this time around. And, you know, we've submitted it as of today. So we're in good shape in terms of it being parallel. And, you know, they can kind of keep up in the process, hopefully, this time. And, and as I said, you know, we both bear responsibility for the, for the Farm Road go around and that we, we're slower than we want to be. The other thing that I would say is that with regard to the wetlands, and in this case, I wouldn't characterize this as a significant intrusion into the buffer zone, as I talked about a minute ago. But current case law, and the lawyers can help me out here, is suggesting that the applicant goes to the Concom after the comprehensive permit process. So it is our intent, once we're finished with you all, to go to the Concom with this work in the outer buffer zone that I described earlier. And those are the two kind of things that are done away from you all, the ZBA. So did I get that right, Rick and Paul?
Yes. So with regards to the Conservation Commission filing, there is fairly recent Superior Court case law that says you have to wait until you've completed the local permitting process. I don't particularly agree with that decision and it's just a Superior Court decision, but that's sort of the status of that question as of right now. The one other aspect, Bob, that is, the board doesn't sit as a local permit granting authority as any actions under the state building code by the building department. So I wanted to make sure we called that out as well.
Right. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would, if you'll hear me, Mr. Chair, I would agree with Mr. Haverty. I think, I don't think it's clear that we don't have any jurisdiction under Title V, but I, but I agree with Bob that running it in parallel is, is just smart. Because even, even if we tried to deal with it on our own, we'd go right to the Board of Health. There are subject matter extra reports. So having them handle it in the first instance and having us just look over their shoulders is ideal. I just don't think it's legally required.
Yeah, I, I guess what I was saying is that the Board of Health has the role of thumbs up or thumbs down on the Title V application as its own standalone matter, but.
Yeah. And to the extent that they have opinions, I'd like to get them out earlier than later.
Sure. That's great. Yeah. So I think that's all I have, Zach. I'm happy to take any kind of initial questions on the project. I may or may not have the answers to all of them. If they get technical, I'm going to need my. Oh, by the way, the engineering firm, just to kind of call out the team on this one. The engineering firm is DGT, which many of us who've been around Metro West for a while and doing things is the old Schofield. The engineering firm is DGT, which many of us who've been around Metro West for a while and doing things is the old Schofield Brothers uh, out of Framingham. And uh, they, you'll recall, this board will recall that they have done the work on Washington Street, which is currently in a little bit of a hiatus, but they did the, the engineering work on that, and they're doing the, and they did the engineering work on, on this site as well. The architect is the same architect that um you've seen uh, uh, from me on Farm Road uh and on uh Washington Street, actually. It's Union Studio out of uh Providence, Rhode Island. They are just fabulous folks, and they do, in my opinion, just great, great work. Uh, and I'm really happy that they've uh, uh, taken me on as a client. Um, let's see, and then of course, Paul is representing me as uh, as he has been uh along the way in the last year. Uh, and I think that is the, the team on this one. As you know, I have different partners in different projects, but uh, I, I am the standalone developer on this eight home project.
Right, thank you. Um, do you want to set, you said you mentioned you want to set a schedule for further meetings, do you want to schedule the next, try to schedule the next meeting or just, or schedule, you know, multiple, yeah, if you want to discuss the cadence of topics? Uh, without setting gates, I don't know if you have a preference there.
Sure, I mean, obviously, Zach, from my perspective, um, you know, moving things along is advantageous, um, you know. I'll, I obviously uh need to abide by your, your cadence, but I, for me to move things along, this is an eight-home project, it's um, uh, it's all been submitted. In other words, you, you know, you have all of the information at this point. I would say that, um, you know, my wish list right now would be to get a peer reviewer signed up, because I'm, I'm assuming you want to uh hire a peer reviewer. I shouldn't uh speak for you.
I think that's, yeah, that's, that's correct.
Um, but I, if, assuming that you uh are going to hire a peer reviewer, I would love to get that decision maybe even made tonight if, if you can. Uh, and I can work with Jeremy and Jeannie on the, you know, the details of that. But, you know, my preference is to move things along. I'm gonna be away, you know, everybody tries to get away if they can during the summer. I'll be away the second two weeks of July, so that probably won't interfere with when necessarily you would want to meet next.
Um, great. Rick, um, do we usually propose the, you know, peer reviewer? Um, or is this, how does that work sort of in process, I guess, here?
It depends. Uh, where, where we've had a peer reviewer who has worked well with uh the development team and with the town, we've often gone back to them just because, you know, there's enough friction in these things without going looking for it.
Uh huh, yeah. So I guess to that end, Bob, I mean, any objection to Tetra Tech? Do you have a preference? I mean?
Not at all. I, I, I actually felt like Tetra Tech, you know, they put us, particularly on Farm Road, they put us through the wringer and you know, ultimately, we were able to, to work well with them and, and get the answers they were wanting. But despite the, that fact, I, I was comfortable that they were, you know, they were smart, they were fair, professional and timely, and all of those things are good.
Uh, Rick, do we need a motion for that or does it sort of, you know, informal, you know, move forward with that selection?
Submit to Mr. Haverdy's oversight, Mr. Chair, I would suggest that maybe you ask the board for a vote uh directing you to work with Jeremy as the town's procurement officer to try to uh set up an arrangement between Mr. Merkson and the ZBA to serve as the peer reviewer on this. Bob, Bob and Tetra Tech have to come to an agreement on pricing and scope, which they have both worked through pretty well in the past. So I think if, if we go to Jeremy, um, Marsette, uh, I, I imagine it'll move pretty well, but Bob, I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, we should, Tom, we're putting them in competition with thirty-five other firms, maybe that'll help the price.
If, 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 if you wish to say so, that's certainly a prerogative.
That's fine. Uh, so I'll take, I'll take that as a motion for, for me to uh proceed, uh, as you described, Rick, to ask your Tetra Tech under mutually agreeable terms with the applicant. Uh, do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Uh, vote by roll call. Fitch?
Aye.
Uh, Labby?
Labby, aye.
Novak?
Aye.
Aye for myself as well. Thank you. I guess that passes, so I will work uh to get Tetra Tech uh arranged for you, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Um, so next meeting date, um, if you're away in July, it looks like that's convenient because I am as well. So um pushing out the last week of July. Are you away the week of the twenty-first, twenty-second? Or are you back that week?
Are you asking me? Sorry, Zach.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm away until the, I think it's the second I come back.
On the second, okay.
Yeah.
So.
First.
Do we want to do a meeting the week of the fifth?
I think that, that works well for me. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Other board members? Any objections to anything in that week? No.
That week works for me.
Any preferences?
Tuesday, Wednesday, sixth, seventh would be what I'd sort of, but, but whatever works for you, Mr. Despotic Chairman.
Bob, any preference?
How about Tuesday, August sixth at seven?
Uh, that sounds good to me. So um, I'll let Jeannie know that that's what we will move to.
And do you want to, um, do you want to decide now what you'd like to see from me that night? Would you, I can bring the engineers for sure.
Yeah, please, uh, we don't have to decide right now because it's a little bit far ways out. If you want to change it up, but I think we could tentatively say, yeah, if you want to start with septic. Or.
We can do water also.
Whatever, we'll do water, yeah. Stormwater, I know, traffic, I suspect traffic's going to be something that people are going to want to talk about in this uh project, so uh, that might be something to start earlier uh than later, if you have the ability to do that.
I mean, honestly, for eight homes, uh, I wasn't inclined to bring a traffic study uh forward. Um, I don't, I don't, it seems like that's a pretty big ask for eight, eight or eighteen bedrooms, let's put it that way.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know that others may agree with that position, so I guess we'll see how it shakes out. So, um, if you, you, you know, I'm seeing other um verbal cues that that's, that will be, that other people have may have concerns. So it's up to you, obviously, if you want to discuss the issue, I suspect the issue will be raised. So um you tell me what you'd like to discuss in, um, on August sixth.
Sure. Well, let's start with the uh. Um, and uh, I mean, I, my sense is that you all are not terribly interested in architecture. I'm happy to bring the architect, but I've never seen you guys interested in the architecture on my projects, so.
Oh, well, I like the architecture on this project, Bob.
Great.
If you're in doubt.
Yeah, but do you want to, but do you want to spend a half hour of your evening looking at the pretty pictures of the building? I'm happy to bring.
Not necessary.
That's what I thought.
Fifteen minutes, a, a lot of the architecture in a lot of these is attractive, it's just not, uh, not really a gating factor for us usually.
That's, that's right. That was my point, yes.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I might suggest on the subject of traffic that maybe uh, once you have a, a um peer reviewer, you ask them what might make sense here. Sure, and maybe, maybe they'll agree with the applicant, or maybe they won't, and.
Yeah, I mean.
But they're, they're professionals.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to talk about this. What I don't think is appropriate is to have somebody uh sit on Brushell Road and count the one car every hour uh that comes down the road. That seems a little um wasteful. Um, but I'm happy to have conversations if people want to talk about the width of the road and, you know, turning radiuses and all of that kind of thing. I, I'm more than happy to talk about that. I, um, you know, I can only, I will tell you that I only have control over public safety on the site. Uh, you know, the, the town is responsible for making sure that fire trucks can get to homes that are built in town. Um, and this is not adding significant volume. But, you know, I understand, it's a, it's a country road, no doubt about that. So we, I'm, I'm not shutting it off and saying we can't talk about it. I, I was just kind of saying that the traditional traffic study that we did for Washington Street, I don't think is appropriate for the site is, was the point I was trying to make.
Well, yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I heard, I heard and uh, uh, and uh, I think to Rick's point, uh, we'll sort of let our peer reviewer.
Perfect. I think that's, that's fair. Yeah, I'll, we'll go with that. We'll see what they have to say, and we can go from there.
Okay, so again, what are we, um, I saw Jonathan or Rick, you both sort of indicated you want to say something, but are you, are you satisfied at this point? Okay, um, so I guess, uh, what do you, so what are we discussing on the sixth? I guess I'm a little confused then at this point, are we just, and which engineers are we talking about, but?
Well, so some of it will depend on, um, I would think we can, assuming we can get in agreement with, with um Tetra Tech right away, it's possible we can start to get some feedback from Tetra Tech uh for discussion. Um, let's see, that's August sixth. Yeah, I mean, that's more than a month away. But I will plan on bringing the engineers to do an overview of uh septic, stormwater and wells. You know, we can begin to have a discussion. Um, you know, I've been in touch with Zach Ward over at the Fire Department and, um, you know, he's initially uh expressed comfort with, with what we've shown him. I, I didn't mention uh in my overview that um just as you come on to the rectangle uh near the septic system, there are some visitor parking spaces and under that, under those visitors parked, excuse me, under the visitor parking spaces will be a uh water supply um uh of thirty thousand gallons uh for the Fire Department to use. And uh, uh, now that we're done with stormwater, if Zach has an interest in moving that somewhere else on the site, I can certainly work with him on that. But he didn't initially express a problem with it in that place.
Mr. Novak?
Um, not sure if I beat Marion, it might have been a tie with, at the buzzer. Um, Bob, this looks like maybe this came to be as an old four-point-four lot with no restriction. I'm just guessing, looking at it with the long leg, I mean, it, it would, it would never pass muster under current subdivision, but, but there are a lot of lots in town that are backlots like this. Do you know anything about the history of it?
I do not know about, I mean, what you're saying sounds right to me, Rick, that that's what it was. I don't know that for sure. There were some funky restrictions, I think, my, my guess, do you want to speak to that, Paul? Would it be better for you to speak to that? The, uh, the lines um on the back, a rectangle, Paul?
Oh, I, I haven't looked into this, Bob, but we'd have to go back and look at the original subdivision approval and see if there was some sort of restriction that was included as part of that decision.
Right, right, yeah, yep.
Um.
Is that what you're asking about, Rick?
Yeah, uh, you know.
In a colloquial, non-legal advice manner, Rick, could you let us know what you mean by old four-point-four lot?
Sure. Um, i- i- in a former life, I was on the planning board for a long time. And a lot of towns have in their zoning bylaw, a, a backlot provision that says, well, you're supposed to have frontage, but um, gosh, we can give you a special permit to have a backlot with very limited frontage. And they wind up looking like this. And um, a- as a policy matter, I was always against them because they tend to be handed out on a, you know, who's, who's friends at the golf club, who's, goes the same church basis as opposed to some sort of objective uh basis for it. Um, but four-point-four was on uh Sherburne zoning by law for a long time, section four-point-four, and it still is. Uh, it was amended in the nineties, which was probably long after this was split off, to say that uh the backlot can't then be further subdivided. And sometimes the planning board is, is excellent about recording that, and sometimes they are less so excellent. And so I was just asking about the history of this one because I was guessing that Bob is right, that this is an old four-point-four lot that, that has its unusual shape with no frontage due to its, due to its history. I was just asking in case you knew.
I, I would guess that as well, Rick, but I have not seen or read that history.
Thank you for that uh color, Rick. Appreciate it. Um, okay, so I think we have uh a date and an agenda for the sixth. Is there anything else you want to try to schedule now, or you want to wait till we get to the sixth?
Yeah, if you want to put another date on the calendar, I'm happy to do that.
Board members, any objection to trying to find a date in mid to late September? Or is that too late, too soon?
I wa- I was thinking late August, Zach.
Oh, sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
This might be another place where it would make sense to wait for the peer reviewer.
Okay.
You, you have another question here out there, Mr. Chair, Ms. Neutra, I think.
Let me see if I can. Do I have to let her speak, or is she able to?
I'm able to speak. Okay, I'll try. Uh, just a quick uh kind of procedural question. Uh, this is a, a somewhat different plan from the one that the town, you know, the various boards and committees reviewed before. So my question simply is, do you want uh to the zoning board, do you want uh boards and committees or the select board to provide you with a revised letter? Uh, because some of the details don't fit the original letter that we sent.
Yeah, I mean, I think there, I suspect there's been, you know, what would be considered material changes to the original plans, and I think an updated um perspective would be helpful. Unless it's prohibited, and but, and that, Mr. Haverdy will let me know that, so.
That is not prohibited.
Great. So then I would welcome an updated opinion based on the material changes, as I would think about them.
One thing that would be nice is if people uh react to the substantially smaller number of bedrooms.
Yes, of course.
Yes, I, I uh will give you a very reserved thumbs up, Bob.
Yeah, just for, for my uh, uh, for my help. Normally, the select board collects comments from all the other committees and puts in a letter to Mass Housing. In this case, people can write directly to uh the zoning board, is that correct? As a board or as an individual?
So, so Marion, I, if, Zach, if you'll allow me, I think Marion is confusing two different processes here in that the project eligibility letter application, which was done six or seven months ago, was the time that the select board collected comments from all over, you know, the, the various boards and, and residents and such. And then those were compiled and given to Mass Housing as they considered whether to give us a project eligibility letter. There's some, that, that, it's certainly appropriate for anybody in town, including the select board, to comment to you all at this point. But it's kind of a different process, you know, than the Pell application process that we went through on this project six months ago. We're about to go through that process on Coolidge Street, a, a, a project eligibility letter application. So anyway, it's just two different processes.
Uh, Marion, I, I see you want to say something, and then Rick is next.
Okay, no, just to uh, to acknowledge that Bob is absolutely correct on this.
Great, um, Rick.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, uh, w- we have all the time uh people who, who wear one hat as a board member or as a board chair and another hat as a citizen, and they just need to be clear when they're, when they're writing to us or speaking. Uh, Michael Lesser has done a very good job of that, and they're saying, look, I'm wearing my CONSCOM hat, I'm not wearing my CONSCOM hat, and that's the right way to do it, just so we know.
Great. Um, okay, so I think at this point, we'll just, we'll hold off on scheduling other meetings until we have a peer reviewer retained, and we know that we have uh some meat on the bone, so to speak, for the, the third meeting uh on the public hearing here. So, um, with that, any motion uh to adjourn?
You've got one more hand up.
Uh, is that Daryl?
Yes, it is. Hi. Uh, so I've been doing a bit of work while listening, and I believe I caught something about uh interest in more timely information from the Board of Health. So the Board of Health is always interested in moving projects along as quickly as we can through our review process, but also just note that uh, given the nature of the reviews that we need to do, having a complete set of information before us is essential. So doing things piecemeal is not really possible. So we do need to wait until that point when everything is provided and gentle and is complete. So, so long as that's happening, I think this project looks uh enormously simpler than uh prior project. So I'm hoping that that process will be streamlined. So I'm hoping that that process will be streamlined.
Great. Thank you, Daryl.
Just, just so I can.
Just wait a second. Daryl, I just want to make sure that, Daryl, you're finished. And there's. So that's it. Okay, Bob, it sounds like you want to say something. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, kind of, I, I think Daryl didn't hear what I said earlier, probably that, you know, Farm Road was a difficult beast for all of us. And, and Daryl, what you probably don't know, because there's no reason you would have opened my email from earlier today. But we have now submitted, we believe, all of the information to both the Board of Health and the ZBA on the project. That's not to say that when you ask questions or ask for more information, we, you know, we'll hopefully be able to give that to you, but we believe we've now given you everything. Whereas in Farm Road, it took us many months, money, many months before we got you the septic plans. And we, you know, that wasn't intentional on our part. It just happened. In this case, you have them as of today. And certainly if there's anything as you have time to review it that you find that's not there, tell us and we'll get it to you as quickly as we can. But we believe we are fully applied, so to speak.
No, I did consider that encouraging.
Yep.
Okay.
Great. Great. Thank you. Hopefully we will have more timely collaboration this time around, so we don't feel like we're being slighted in any way. Okay, with that, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Rick's going to make a motion to adjourn and I'll second his motion.
All right, I move to adjourn. All right. Continue the hearing until next time.
We'll continue the hearing until the 6th at 7:00. Vote by roll. Fitch?
Yes.
Labby?
Yes, aye.
McBride, aye. Novak?
Aye.
Great. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.